Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reggie, your mic you need to put on. Clip your mic on, please.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, clause of 1975, the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner: On February 4th, 2019, a notice was faxed and mailed to the following newspapers: The Home News Tribune and The Sentinel. On February 4th, 2019, a notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and the post at the Board of Education Administration Building. And on October, excuse me, on February 4th, 2019, a notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office.
Roll call.
Mr. Andre.
Here.
Mr. Bezzacca.
Here.
Mrs. Beck.
Miss Beck, Ben Xues.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Rosano.
Here.
Mrs. Urbani.
Here.
Mr. Wailuda.
Here.
Mrs. Cansiano.
Here.
All board members have minutes of September, October, and November, Decembers, and Januaries meetings, which have been revised. Board membership pleasure, under minutes.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cruz. Second by Mr. Nielsen. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Mr. Facilities?
There are six items on the agenda for tonight: The South River Parks and Recreation, the South River Board of Health, Primary School PTA, the South River Football Club, ECSS Support Services, and Batista, missionary de fai.
Board members, your pleasure.
Move the use of facilities in accordance with board policies.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cruz. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. And the financial report, Mrs. Cruz.
Yes, we have Jarrett Sinkwitz from Samuel Klein &amp; Company in attendance this evening. You don't want to do it now?
No, we're the financial reporter.
So you just want to do that and then do that under?
Right, then, Jerry, we should do that.
Oh, okay, I'll read that first.
Yeah.
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is receipt of the financial report which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for their remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and the Treasurer of School monies for December 2018 be approved tonight. So move.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
No. Jarrett Sinkwitz is from Samuel Klein &amp; Company is in attendance tonight. He's going to give us a brief overview of our annual audit report. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here, it's a little late in the process, as you're aware. The report was issued within the last month, and the reason it was issued late was not by any fault of South River Board of Ed, New Jersey Department of Ed, or my firm. There was some actuarial information that was released relative to June 30th of 18. It was not released until February 11th, that under the generally accepted accounting principles for school districts, which is a nationwide thing, we were required to integrate into the audit report this year for the first time. It had to do with what's called other post-employment benefits. Translation: health benefits upon retirement. Okay? And it's complicated, it's actuarially determined, it did not have any adverse impact on your financial statements, okay? It's merely what we call note disclosure, relative to what South River Board of Ed's share is of health benefits, of which they have no cost for. So it's actually funded by another, by the state. But we have to integrate that into the audit report and disclose it so that anyone who reads the financial statements of the district can see what the true cost to run the district really is, even though the district didn't incur, physically incur the expense. So that's the reason why we were late. We issued the report in the last month. We actually had an exit conference. First, we had an exit conference with Ken and with Superintendent Sylvia back in November, and the Finance Committee also in November, to discuss the audit. Because the audit was complete. It was in a holding pattern for two months until all the other information was provided. So we, again, we had that meeting, we put the audit in a holding pattern. We had provided Ken all of our information, all the opening balances, all the adjustments of which there were minimal, and he was in agreement with the financial statements at that point in time, but like I said, we were lacking that other information. So that's all been taken care of. Our audit was done, it starts sometime in July. We try to audit the student activity funds, get them out of the way so they could be brought back to the schools, so when the kids get back in late August, they can, the student activity advisors can have that information. We then spend time reviewing expenditures, payroll, revenue, the food service program, special revenue programs, and we do various tests. And as I've said in prior years, we've had absolutely positively successful results in all of the testing that we've done, of the records from the business office. And as a result of that, we are able to issue what is known as an unmodified audit opinion. In the old days, it was called a clean opinion, an unqualified opinion. Basically, what it is, is this, is that we get hired to do the audit. Management is required to provide us with all the financial records and financial statements and underlying reports and records. We audit those records, and then we give the board an opinion. So again, our opinion is that it's unmodified, meaning there was no, I don't know, maybe another five years they'll change it again to some other thing, but it's unmodified because there was no deviations from the required accounting principles that we're supposed to follow. It's all basically in there, and it's all put together and into this larger document, okay? But I want to point out that every year, we issue two documents, one of which is actually the boards, the thicker of the two, is actually the business offices' representations. The only thing that belongs to us within this document is a three-page opinion letter that gives the unmodified opinion. So based on what we had is extremely successful results in all of our testing, we're able to step back and say, okay, the financial statements present fairly. Now, to get there, we have to go through our testing. And real quickly, expenditures were all properly documented, they were all properly coded with respect to the budgetary account, they were all properly cut off with respect to the fiscal year, and we're in compliance with the public school contracts law. With payroll, we do, again, we run samples of everything. We're not doing 100% at work, although some, some school BAs think we do 100%, but it seems like it, but, you know, we, we have a good, you have a good system here, a good setup, and the likelihood of an error slipping through to our level is minimized by the fact that you have good people working in key spots over across the street in the business office. So based on that, we're able to give the opinion that it's clean. Now, the thinner of the two documents is actually, and I don't have it, there's a cover that was attached to it, the thinner of the two is my representation to the board about the operation of the finance office, the business department of the district. And again, emphasis, we do testing in several different areas: transportation, travel, special ed, tuition, payroll, payroll taxes, student activity funds, electric bills, water bills. We check a lot of things to make sure that everything is properly stated at year end. And it is, we've had good results here for many, many years, and that's a tribute to Ken and the business office. So in this document here, we elaborate on that, okay? And again, we have no adverse comments that would require the district to prepare a plan of action or correct the plan of action. So the thinner of the two is my representation of the board, that there's nothing that came to our attention that needed to be addressed by the board, and believe me, if there had been, we would have had a Finance Committee meeting sooner, and it probably would have already been addressed. And, you know, again, because of the circumstances from the Department of Treasury being late, you know, we're already at March, and if we found something back in August or September, Ken would have addressed it and put it away, so to do it now is just, just a formality. So again, good results, unmodified opinion, and no recommendations.
Thank you, Jarrett.
And also, most importantly, in spite of all, everything we do, we have, one thing we want to say, most important, is your, your cash accounts are reconciled monthly, and they tie to the general ledger, to the penny, on a monthly basis. That's critical. In this day and age where you, all the sophistication and auditing techniques out there, cash is still the king, and cash reconciles to the penny. We happen to have a very good treasurer of school monies, to remain nameless, but, I mean, it, everything worked out, and I think that's important to mention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good.
Okay.
Be good, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. We'll talk.
Mr. President, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kokoska and his staff for doing another estimate. What is it, 18 years in a row, Ken? 19 years in a row?
Nineteen.
Nineteen years in a row.
And added to that, Tony, you're absolutely right, it seems like every year, the state comes out with new regulations or added regulations, what have you, and when we get audited, even though they might have been newer, what have you, we seem to be right on top of it. Is that true, Mr.?
That is correct. I do, I do want to also indicate for the record that we want to thank the support staff for all their hard work.
Yeah, they're the ones that do the work.
Superintendent's people, all the way, that whole building over there are very, very, they're interested in doing a good job, and they're very cooperative with us, with all of our questioning and inquiry, so.
Does board members have any questions?
No. Just thank you for coming up today.
It's no problem. It's not a problem.
Yeah, I think without it.
Before you leave, though, Jerry, just stay for the public portion in case we get a question from the audience.
Sure.
Okay?
I could do that, which is right now.
Which is going to be right now.
I'm here.
We're going to open a meeting to the public for any comments or questions strictly on items that are on the agenda. Those that have comments or questions are limited to 10 minutes, and would you want to come to the podium, would you please give us your name and address? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, last call. Close the public portion of the meeting. We will continue with the agenda. The Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Wailuda. I'm going to start off this evening with a surprise, and that is that our, some members of our middle school robotics team are here with us tonight. You can see some of what they've been working on here at the center of our table, and the reason why, why it's here is because our members of the middle school club will be actually demonstrating and talking to administrators from all over the state tomorrow about some of what they've been accomplishing and doing, and, and the reason why it's really of notice is because we, we were able to use our Title IV funding in order to, to open up a middle school robotics team this year. So I'll call them up at this time, along with their advisor, Ms. Cardell, and we'll give them a little bit of, of our time tonight.
Hi, Ms. Nice.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. So what's this do?
So first, we're going to do, we're going to try to get this one into this airlock here, this, this needs.
Who wants to be the voice? Somebody want to talk?
So, yeah, this first program, we're just trying to get this part right here into that little container right here. So starting it now.
Sure, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always the first.
It takes like 10, 10 months, consistency.
When did you start building these?
I think.
We started building back in around September or October.
Late October.
Okay. And when were you doing this? After school?
We would do this after school, from right after school to around 4:00, 3:30.
We managed to enter a competition on December 1st, and in the week leading up to that competition, the students were coming during their lunch, they were coming after school every day, trying to work out the kinks, because we did get a late start in the season.
So you put a lot of time into this, huh?
Yeah.
Now, all these pieces that I'm seeing on the board here, you assembled them yourself and you built them?
Yes, the team helped assemble these pieces.
And each of them does some separate function?
So each of them is their, its own different task.
That we have to get the robot to perform?
Oh, oh my goodness.
Oh, so close.
Oh, so close.
Yeah, it takes a couple tries for the code, because it will lag up sometimes, and we try to prevent that as much as possible.
So this is being sent by a code that you're sending to it from the computer?
Yeah. We add different tasks and programs, and like, if we want it to go a certain amount of rotations, we will put in like 3.7 rotations, and it will go that amount.
Okay.
And it's really just trial and error, and you got to like, get as best as you can get.
And you coded this?
Mm-hmm, the team worked together to code it.
How did you learn how to code?
It's not really that hard, like, it's just using like blocks, and it has like settings within each block that you could set it to, so it does the task right.
Is the jig not placed right?
And one of the neat things about FIRST, which is the organization that runs the high school competitions and the Lego League, is they foster walk petition, they call it. So when we went to the competition at Liberty Science Center, other teams stepped up and said, oh, this might help you, you know, you're struggling with placement at the beginning, and they showed us a jig, they call it, that it helps us consistently place the robot. We're still struggling a little bit, obviously.
Yeah, originally, we would just match it up with a certain amount of squares, and it was like really complicated. We got like all into this math stuff, and it took up too much time, and it wasn't precise. So now we just built a jig.
I'll give it one more shot.
We have like, we have like a 10 consistent one in there.
Did you?
We did. Oh, my goodness.
And then we have like, like, I've been wondering, we have like a 20, 20 old machine to do this.
The persistence of them is really impressive. Like, they pull it and do dozens and dozens, I mean, over time, it's been hundreds of trials for the different obstacles and challenges, but we keep giving it one more try.
Yeah, because maybe this time.
Ooh, a little bit close.
Yeah.
Maybe we can work on this a little more.
Maybe. One more, they were so close.
They want one more, one more.
One more, you were so close.
Yeah, I thought they had it that time, yeah.
Yeah. Each of these on that plat, on that table there does something different?
Yeah.
Is that it? Okay. Different mission, I like that.
Are you all in the same grade?
No. We range from sixth to eighth grade.
Who's in sixth? Raise your hand if you're in sixth. Seven, eight. Great job, kids, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Really, you all have some, I mean, very, very impressive.
Good showing.
Don't be discouraged if it doesn't work right away. I got to tell you, most of the people in this room won't remember this, but I do. Back in the 1950s, the Russians put a satellite into space, the first earth satellite ever into space that orbited the earth. Well, the United States was caught off guard a little bit, and back then, it was the Cold War. You know, if you don't know what that is, ask your social studies teacher. It was the Cold War, and so we rushed and rushed to get rockets into space. It must have been nine failures before the United States ever got a rocket, before NASA ever got a rocket into space with a satellite to go around in orbit. So if you have a few that don't work, that's fine. So did NASA. Don't worry about it. You're going to do great, kids. I'm really impressed. Yes, sir?
Go head to head, like, and they don't say anything?
Right, well, they don't shoot anything. There are no missiles or guns or battles. That's why it's a Cold War. But back then, you've got the right idea. What's your name?
Davi Suarez.
Doug, okay, Doug, what, what it was between the United States and Russia, to see who could be better, and this, this came out after World War II, it went up through the Ronald Reagan administration, is when it ended. But yeah, that's what it is, two countries battling but without any shooting or battles. It's all words, and look, we did this accomplishment, we did this before you, we did that before you. That's what it was, you know? So, good question, good question. But just to give you a little perspective on, don't give up.
All right, so what we're going to be doing now is a mission where we have to get this little guy named Gerhard, and we have to get the robot to put him on that little ledge right there, and get the robot to come back to this area.
This was the most frustrating one. It was like, it kept, it kept going on it, and then it kept just bouncing it out back. And, and the robot and the astronaut would land all like, feet flat. Was that how they say it?
Yeah. We were so excited when we got this one to work.
How many are supposed to be put it?
It does that sometimes.
One of the parents was kind enough to build the arena for us to the specifications of FIRST, so that we can have more authentic practices.
It was heavy.
Yeah. Success. Well done, well done.
Thank you.
We thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep it up.
Good job, guys.
Great job, team.
Thank you.
Great job, great job. We're real proud of you, kids.
If you wanted to see the FIRST mission work, we posted on our Twitter at the Inators SRMS. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up the floor for questions.
When is your next competition?
Next competition, probably next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
And you'll be working hard from now until then?
Yep.
Great, great.
How'd you move the team name?
Phineas and Ferb.
I was going to say Phineas and Ferb.
So we grew up in the golden age of Phineas and Ferb and Good Comics, and we thought of Doofenshmirtz, because we were originally going to name them after the Inators, like the Liptonator.
Liptonator.
And we are actually going to be, we are working over the summer on this, right? Yeah, we're going to be working all year now on it.
So you guys hope to be champions for the entire tri-state area, right?
Mm, we're trying to, we're trying to get in the top three next season. The whole tri-state area, then the world.
It's a Phineas and Ferb reference, everybody.
But don't, best in the world, that's a good.
My sons love that show, still watch it when I'm growing up.
It's a very good show.
What show is that called? It's called Phineas and Ferb, it's a cartoon. Oh, yeah, yeah, I did see it. And the Dr. Doofenshmirtz, everything is, is anator, this inator, that inator.
The Inator-nator.
Yeah.
We named our robot Perry after the platypus.
Perry platypus.
We always call them in like robotics session, perled.
Do you know how Jerry is short for Gerald?
Yes.
Perry should be short for peril.
Excuse me.
Kids, did you develop these robots on your own, or are they kits to you by the Legos?
They're kits from, they're kits from like the Mindstorm and first Lego League. All we have to do is just build it, and when we get the robot, it's just like a brick, and then we attach like motors and wheels to it, so it could perform a specific task.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, so actually, it all comes disassembled, and you're, you can build it however you want. Like, people were building like these big or short bendy arms, they were like forklifts, and it literally just comes with this cube on top, and you can just program it however you want, and you can build anything. There's YouTube channels where they build vending machines out of Legos, and it's like some of the coolest things I've ever seen.
The key is the programming, isn't it?
Hmm? Yeah.
That's great. If the coding isn't correct, we will, it will never prosper. Like, it's all about trial and error, basically.
You have to be very specific when programming.
Got to have a lot of patience.
Yeah.
2.88, like 2, something like that.
Yeah, we bottom down to like the hundredths place when coding.
Wow.
Thank you.
Very good. Neil, you're all.
So in a, in a great segue, we were just informed last week that we received a Title I reallocation grant that we applied for, almost $69,000 that will be distributed to all four of our schools, and one of the initiatives that we are, that we're moving forward with through that grant is to be able to provide a summer program for our middle school robotics team, as well as our high school robotics team.
Very good.
So they'll be able to continue their work and, and accomplish even, even more than they already accomplished in such a short time. Very proud of them. Also, in the Superintendent's Report tonight, we have more good news about our students. Seal of Bilinguality, we administered the Seal of Bilinguality assessment to, to our high school students. Last year, we had three students that were able to, to accomplish receiving their Seal of Bilinguality, which means that they are basically recognized for being bilingual in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. This year, we were able to increase that number, and we have 10 students who were tested, which included one student in Russian, four in Spanish, five in Portuguese, and nine out of the 10 students that tested were successful and had received their Seal of Bilinguality. So our numbers are growing, and we're really proud of our students for going for it, because it's definitely not an easy, easy feat, and so we're very proud of them for that as well. I want to thank the SRFEE, their dinner dance was a great success. The room was packed, it was a wonderful night. I was really honored at their recognition, but, but more importantly, the work that they do, and you'll see some of that tonight, just really results in, in great things for our schools and for our students. So just a special thank you to them. Also, SRPD had their chili cook-off this year, and they invited me to judge. That was also a great opportunity, a fun Saturday morning. We got to taste a lot of chili, we had a great winner, which was a cheeseburger chili. I've never tasted a chili that tasted exactly like a cheeseburger, and this one did, so it was also quite impressive. We have a, an update on the graduation requirements, we talked about this last month. There's new legislature almost being presented on a monthly basis in regards to the graduation requirement, but the, the state does now have a plan for our current students to ensure that they have a process for meeting the graduation requirements. In a recent resolution, members of the classes of 2019 and 2020 now qualify to graduate if they successfully completed the SAT or another approved standardized test, such as the ACT or a military placement assessment. So we're happy to know that that's been resolved for, for our current seniors and juniors, and they are, the state is still working on a resolution for, for the upcoming years. So we're, we're getting there, but good news in, in that regard. And then the last item on my Superintendent's Report is the new traffic pattern. We've been communicating this out through our ERAM, and ERAM went out yesterday, yesterday was Wednesday, and ERAM went out Tuesday. One will be going out tomorrow, Friday as well. SRPD has been handing out flyers to communicate what the new traffic pattern looks like, and we are hoping that this truly resolves some of what's been going on with, with the traffic. But members of SRPD are here, thank you so much for being here tonight, in case there are any questions or comments in, in this regard. And so concludes my Superintendent's Report. We also have Ms. Turner-Smith here, who is going to be presenting her grants tonight, so I'll call her to the podium at this time.
Can we get a motion to accept the report?
Yeah. If we're.
Well, I have to do the HIB also, I just want to do it after.
No, that's, it goes on the consent resolution.
Oh, okay.
The report just gets accepted, that's it.
Okay.
And we are hoping that this, uh, truly resolves some of what's been going on with, with the traffic. Um, but members of SRPD are here, thank you so much for being here tonight, in case there are any, um, questions or comments in, in this regard. And so concludes my superintendent's report. Um, we also have Ms. Turner Smith here, who is going to be presenting, uh, her grants tonight, so I'll call her to the podium at this time.
Can we get a motion to accept the reporters?
Yeah. Before...
Well, I have to do the HIB also, I just want to do it after.
No, that's, it goes on the consent resolution.
Oh, okay.
The report just gets accepted, that's it.
Okay.
So, I'm just getting a motion to accept it.
You want to do that now?
Would you like to wait?
One second, that's all.
Yeah, just one second.
Sure.
Uh, we'd like to get a motion for the acceptance of the superintendent's report.
I move.
Second. Second, by Mr. Nielsen. Any questions? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Shanetta, this is more yours.
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, I'm Shanetta Turner Smith, the president of the South River Foundation for Educational Excellence. Um, thank you so much for your kind words, Sylvia, about the banquet. Uh, thank you all for who were there in attendance and thought word and deed, we appreciate it immensely. Um, it was a successful evening, everyone had a good time. Um, more importantly, we raised some money so that we can fund the, uh, grants, which we do every year. So, at this time, I'd like to announce the winners of the grants, and I hope they are here this evening. Rebecca Jo from the South River Middle School. Here you are, congratulations. If you'd just like to give a short summary of what your grant entails?
Sure. So, what I wrote the grant for is a program called Rocket Lit. It's an adaptive learning platform that provides, uh, standard-based science articles at their, uh, different reading levels. So, the students would be assessed on the computer first to see what their reading level is. There's seven different levels offered and it is then generated based on their reading levels, uh, to align with the next generation standards. So, the program continuously is monitoring them, checking for their understanding, growth in vocabulary. So, students can use the articles to provide, um, review, they can take notes on the articles, and it also can help with standardized testing because it has, uh, comprehension questions at the end. Um, Rocket Lit also, it does it in a way where they don't realize that they have different articles. So, it's fit to their needs, but they don't know that they have a lower reading article. So, it also generates ports which, um, are very beneficial during, during conferences and teach, uh, speaking with parents. So, it can be accessed using any device and you can also print out the articles.
Thank you. Next, we have Bonnie Francion, the high school nursing office. I don't believe that she's here this evening. Um, she is the advisor for the Future Healthcare Professionals, uh, Professionals Club. And her, uh, grant was for careers and health awareness for teens. So, I will give that to her, um, tomorrow. Next, we have Fran Baker for the South River Elementary School.
Um, good evening, everyone. Mrs. Mangione and I are thrilled to be one of the recipients of this year's SRFE mini-grant. The grant is being used this year to provide our students with the opportunity to participate in the Rhythm Works Integrative Dance Program, which will be presented by Mrs. Robin from Kaden Dance Studios. Rhythm Works Integrative Dance was created by a team that includes a dance educator, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, an early education consultant, as well as a special needs educational therapist. The Rhythm Works Integrative Dance Programs are specifically designed to use music, purposeful movement, and rhythm patterns to help those with individual learning differences. By providing dance instruction through the Rhythm Works Program, students will meet goals such as developing body awareness and control, increased strength, flexibility, and coordination. The Rhythm Works Integrative Dance Program also aids students in gaining skills that will improve focus, imitation, memory and recall, as well as increased receptive and expressive language. The students are currently learning to develop and build skills using the Eden Autism Services School Series. And within that series is a, a physical education and recreational component. So, by participating in this dance class, we're enhancing their learning by providing the opportunity to generalize the specific skills that they are learning in their student programs that are individualized. We believe this activity will make a significant and positive impact on our special education self-contained students. And our students will be extremely excited to participate in what we think is an engaging and beneficial activity. So, Mrs. Mangione and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity you've given us to bring the passion of dance to our special needs preschool classes. And we thank you again for your hands in the enhancement of the preschool special education program.
Next, we have Kim Yarusha from the South River Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for awarding me, uh, this grant. I wanted to do something that would benefit the entire elementary school rather than just a certain population or a certain class. So, I decided to create a South River Elementary School Rocks Rock Garden. I selected a book called Only One You and it's an inspirational children's book about a little fish who goes out to explore the ocean on his own and is given a few messages from his parents. They remind him always to be on the lookout for a new friend, find your way, and that you don't have to follow a crowd. After reading the books to each student, they will paint their own unique rock inspired by the fish in the book. This will teach children to value themselves and others. It helps to build their core values and provides opportunities to develop kindness. Kids grow so much in elementary school, not just physically, but in who they are as people. It is the beginning of meaningful, meaningful friendships. And when kids start to navigate complex social situations on their own, not only are these stones a colorful addition to a school, they can serve as a daily reminder to students that no matter what, they're special and that they have the power to change the world. This art project uses simple materials, but its message is hugely, a hugely powerful one. So, we intend to take the, um, the rocks, the art teacher is gonna work with me to have the kids decorate the rock unique to themselves, and we're gonna create a rock garden in our courtyard.
Very good, very nice.
Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Lara Getz from the South River Middle School. I'd just like to add that Lara applies each and every year. Okay, and I think that's admirable and, uh, we appreciate your enthusiasm. And as long as you keep applying, we will try and keep giving.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the South River Foundation of Educational Excellence. Um, I truly appreciate, um, being awarded these grants and really to give South River students opportunities that we normally wouldn't have, or try something different. So, this grant this year is a little bit, um, different than my other previous ones. This one's for flexible seating. So, um, all students do not learn the same way, nor do they all learn best with traditional seating. My goal for this project was to begin to implement flexible seating in my special ed classroom. Comfortable students are calm, focused, and more productive. The project will be, um, to purchase four special wobble chairs to help students who, um, have ADHD and autism, two, um, balance stability chairs, and twelve rubber fidget vans to attach to the already established, um, seats in the classroom. Um, children need to move, the flexible seating will allow them to wobble and rock and bounce. Um, physical activity is linked to higher academic performance, both, um, for health reasons and to improve behavior. So, I, I'm looking forward to trying something out, seeing how it works. Um, and I just wanna thank them again.
Good job, Lara.
So, this is our fourth year of giving. Um, we hope that we will continue giving. Uh, the last four years have been in the form of mini-grants. We have three different levels of giving. Perhaps next year, we can do something different. Uh, we finally passed our five-digit number. Um, so, we're getting there where we'd like to be. Eventually, we'd like to have a rolling grant process where it's not limited to, um, a two-month timeframe. But baby steps, we've come a long way and we sincerely thank each and every one of you, as well as the teachers, the administrators, and everyone who has helped us along the way. We truly appreciate the support. Thank you.
Shanetta? This program has been in the minds of the board many, many years ago. And it's only really within the past four years that it's gone to fruition as it has. And it seems to be growing every, every year. So, from the board, from the community, from our students, from our administration. We thank you very much for the effort that you put in, since I know you were one of the key figures, to make it work, because we had a hard time at the beginning. But to make it work, and we thank you very, very much for your efforts.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. I'd just like to add that, um, while I appreciate the kind words, it is a group effort. And, um, we have a good group, basically that's what it comes down to. We don't have a large group, but we have quality. Quality is, goes a lot further than quantity, so, thank you for the kind words and I will send it back to my, uh, my core group. And, uh, we'll continue to do what we can. Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. Good job. Before we continue, at this time, I see we do have representation from our police department. And, uh, from what we understand, we're going to have, starting Monday, a new traffic, uh, organization. And if the police department would like to, for the rest of those that watch the TV, uh, give us a little bit of a background on it. And if there's any questions from the audience or the board itself, I'd like to give them the opportunity, uh, to get them cleared up. Chief?
Thank you. Uh, for, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Mark Mitigian, I'm the chief of police for the South River Police Department. Uh, I didn't have anything prepared, I was just, uh, prepared to come here and just answer some questions. Uh, just a little bit of a, a background on, on what we've been doing over the last, I'd say probably about two months. Um, since last year, I don't know if many of yous have, uh, had the opportunity to travel the school campus in the morning when the elementary and the middle school are actually getting into the school. The traffic here, vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic, I don't know if it's maybe the increase in the population of the town or the increase in the population of the students, but the traffic has increased. Uh, it's gotten so bad, um, that in the beginning of this year, when I was driving through the school campus, that the traffic during elementary and middle school when they were getting in, that the traffic on Johnson Place was all the way up to David Street. Uh, and there was cars going around cars, people just did not wanna wait. They were frustrated, um, talking to our crossing guards. Uh, they were frustrated, the parents were frustrated, the drivers were frustrated, the residents were frustrated, pretty much everybody up there in that location, they were all frustrated. So, we decided, uh, starting beginning of January, that we were gonna try to remedy the situation. Uh, one of the things that we did, that we looked at, was the Johnson Place and Montgomery Street intersection. Uh, there has been a no-left turn there for several years. We decided through the recommendation through our Traffic Safety Bureau, that we were gonna take that down. So, we put, we put out a NICS lot there that we were temporarily gonna remove that. Uh, we stationed a police officer up there. I believe, within a two-week timeframe, every day, we were probably only about four or five people that actually made that left-hand turn. From there, we decided that, you know, maybe it's the issue with our crossing guards. Uh, maybe our crossing guards are slowing down the traffic. So, we did a couple moves with our crossing guards and it wasn't remedying, remedying the situation. We decided that we would put a police officer to, we put a police officer there at that corner, at that intersection there. It still wasn't helping out with the traffic. At certain points in time, the traffic coming out of the high school driveway was so backed up that I myself actually directed traffic out there. It just was not working. So, with the assistance of one of our police officers, who, um, is very technically savvy, uh, he has a drone. Uh, he put a drone up in the air and during the timeframe when the school was getting in, we were looking to see where the traffic was being created. The problem is, is that, I think the issue is that, that people do not want to, when they're dropping off their kids at the elementary school, they do not wanna make that right-hand turn into the pit. They get caught up, they get bogged up up there, the traffic is a standstill, so they don't, they don't wanna go in there. So, it causes a major issue. So, we've, we've done all these remedies, we've tried all these different things. Um, so, we figured that we would maybe try to change the traffic pattern inside the school campus. Um, and I'll let Sergeant York talk about, you wanna talk about that?
So, if you, uh, I don't know if, if everybody had a chance to see the diagram that was sent out with the ERAM, I have copies here if you'd like. Um, so, what we decided to do was, uh, attempt to have the traffic that the parents and the residents that are dropping off their students on Johnson Place, and they're getting hung up there. That, those are the, uh, motorists that the chief was referring to that don't wanna pull into the back parking lot of the elementary school, because they feel they're gonna get stuck there. So, what's happening is that they're dropping off on Johnson Place. And it's strictly for the elementary school, because they drop off for the middle school, right in front of middle school. And, um, it seems like most, if not, it seems like all sometimes, um, parents that have children that go to the middle school also have children that go to the elementary school. So, they'll drop off at the middle, then they have to make that right-hand turn to drop off. Um, the cold, obviously, the weather plays a big part of it, okay, when it's very cold, um, when it's raining, when it's snowing out. I understand that parents don't wanna drop their kids off and have them walk a block, two blocks in the inclement weather. But that's really a majority of the problem is right there, if not all of it. So, they do not wanna make the left-hand turn. So, suspending the left-hand turn really didn't resolve the problem. Uh, we feel that it might help the problem, uh, or might remedy the situation altogether, if we have traffic coming through the high school. That for elementary, obviously, this would be for, because they wanna drop off in the back and they wanna avoid the traffic in the front. So, they come in through the high school, they come down, uh, in front of the, I'm sorry, they come through the high school lot, they come in front of the actual high school here, not in front of the board building. Um, they come down to, right before you're gonna make the left-hand turn to exit the parking lot where our crossing guard is there, you're actually gonna go straight. You're gonna continue down around the back of the school where the dumpsters are of the elementary school and come out towards the Johnson Place. Your children will be dropped off, the children will be dropped off at the stop sign that we're gonna have placed in the, uh, pit, in the rear pit area, we call it the pit area there. In that rear pit area, there's gonna be a stop sign where you can pull up, stop, drop your child off. If there's several cars that stop there at the same time and the doors open and the kids get out, that's fine. It's, it's in the parking lot, it's off the roadway, it's, we're hoping to relieve the traffic, some of the traffic, if not all of it, that's on Johnson Place. Um, even if certain people decide they wanna still continue to drop off on Johnson Place, some of the people will be dropping off inside of the parking lot because they will have no choice. Um, they will have to go through the one-way there. It, it will be, continue to be a one-way, but it's just flipped into the opposite direction. So, basically, as easy as I could say it, is that you're gonna just come in the high school lot, travel around through the parking lot, go around the back of the school, one-way by the dumpsters, and then come out on Johnson Place. At that point, when you come out of Johnson Place, you can make a left or a right at this point.
It looks like us that, uh, pretty much, that the parents that are dropping off their, their kids at the middle school, elementary school, um, since they're doing it at the same time, what we figured is that we would split the traffic up. We were looking to put, uh, the people that are going to the middle school, drop the kids off, if they're gonna stay on Montgomery. People that are gonna go to the elementary school are gonna go into the parking lot and trek their way down to, bit down to that location there.
Is this something that is permanent, will be permanent or is this...
No, this is all, this is only temporary. We're just looking to see if this works. We'll probably give it like a two-week timeframe. It, it might work, it might not work, it might make it worse. Uh, but this is the, the last thing, the last option that we have to try to rectify the situation. Like I said, it might make it better, it might make it worse, we'll go back to what we originally had. We'll, we'll be out there with our officers again, handing out the pamphlets, doing the NICSs, doing the Facebook posts. But at least, we could say to the parents when they start complaining, we tried. We tried to remedy the situation, we tried doing the signage, we tried doing the police officer, we tried changing all the crossing posts, we tried changing the traffic. It's, it's just something that's, uh, you know, traffic happens everywhere. Unfortunately, in the two-point-eight-square-mile town, it happens in three blocks. Uh, and it happens within like probably a twenty-hour, twenty-minute timeframe.
Chief, I have a question. With the, the traffic going in front of the high school as opposed to the board office, will you still have access yourselves to get to the, um, high school? Like, I'm thinking if someone's walking in the hallway, they slip, they fall, now we need an ambulance. Are you able to still get access in, because you know Murphy's Law is gonna happen during elementary, when they're, they're arriving?
Will we still get access into the front of the high, yes, yes we will.
Yeah, okay.
Chief, I assume it's the same thing picking up, same pattern, pick up the...
Same pattern, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone from New York? Does anyone from the audience have any questions whatsoever, or classification?
Mr. Wylota, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to ask about a couple of observations. So, I'm looking at the pattern here, and these yellow dash lines that run on the access road behind the elementary school. To the west, or to the left of it, there is an additional lane. What is, what is that lane used for at this time? Do you see where I'm speaking of? There are two lanes there.
Oh.
Separated by fence.
The inside, the inside, where the kids line up.
Yes.
Well, I think you just answered my question. The kids line up there?
Yes.
Okay, because I was just going to suggest that perhaps if the, there are no pedestrians there, that that lane can also be used, because then you would double your capacity of pick-up and drop-off at that point.
No, it's both.
Okay. All right, so that's not an option. The only other thing that I noticed about this is making the left coming out of the access road onto Johnson Place.
I just want to say something real quick for your next question, before I forget. So, that, that area where they line up the kids, that's going to be closed off, obviously the barricade is closed off when you're, when the parents are pulling in. But when, once the, after 8:00 AM, once the preschool starts to come in, that's going to be opened back up by the administration of the school, they're going to slide that barricade over. We'll do it for the first week or so that we're there. And then you'll have two lanes for preschool, because there is a lot of cars for preschool. So, they'll be able to line up both lanes for preschool. They stop, they actually get out, and we don't have to worry about kids running all over, because they actually get out, walk their kids into the school.
Okay, good, so both those lanes will then be available for drop-off?
Just for that time.
Just for the pre, for the preschool, okay.
Because then we have elementary, middle, and preschool.
Mm-hmm. And just my other observation is the left coming out of that access road, onto Johnson Place, to go west onto Johnson Place. Took a look at that, and just from my perspective, it seems that you will process a lot more traffic if you just make it a right turn only. And my concern is that the driveway coming out of there, I don't know if it's wide enough for two lanes to form of traffic coming out of there and making the left. And I know as a driver myself, since there is quite a steep upgrade, an incline, to make a left, when you see a car, or, let me back up. When you have no cars coming, and you believe that you're clear to go, you look right, you look, you look left, you look right, then you look left again, and you're ready to go, and you see a car cresting the hill. Not every driver is going to feel that they have enough time to make that left turn. So, again, my concern, and just watch for this, is you may get backups of drivers making that left turn, to the point where it's going to be at the location where that driveway gets only wide enough for one lane of vehicles. So, if this doesn't initially work, consider maybe just making the turn out of that driveway all right turns. Because right turns exit much quicker than a right and a left.
I agree, I agree with you. That's, that's one of the first things that we looked at, that it was only going to be a right, right turn. But, you know, we were discussing it with our engineer, we were discussing about maybe making no parking lanes right at that left turn, so it's a little bit wider. But it's, it's a, I agree with you, that that left turn probably won't be there.
Yeah, no, yeah, and of course, see how it works, you know, nothing beats a failure but a try. And give it a try. And that would just be my two observations on this. I hope it does give us some alleviation of the traffic in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, the traffic is bad up there, so, you know, we're, this is, this is only trial. So, if anybody has any suggestions, we've talked to the crossing guards, we've talked to some of the parents. Our crossing guards are the boots on the ground, they're the ones that are there every morning. So, if anybody has any suggestions, believe me, we're, we're open up to suggestions just to try to remedy this for everyone.
Oh, and you just reminded me of something. That left turn does cross over a crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there going to be a...
There's a crossing guard there now.
Yes, there is, but is there, for the first couple of days, is there going to be a police presence there directing the traffic for those left and right turns?
There'll be a police, police presence there the whole entire week.
Okay, and that officer will be able to step in in direct traffic?
Yes.
Okay, because there is a crosswalk that that left turn, that car making the left turn will have to cross over, and we can't expect the crossing guard to direct traffic.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members?
I have a, I have one. I just have one concern, that the, when you come out of the parking lot, the high school parking lot, down behind the school there, that's a pretty steep drop as well. So, just something to kind of keep an eye out of, the winter, I know the winter's almost over, hopefully we don't get into winter in it. But if this does work, this pattern, just something to thought to kind of salt it, or keep, keep that area.
Yeah, we would take care of that.
Because that is a steep, maybe not as steep as Johnson, but I know that air, that hill, it's pretty hilly there, an incline, that parking lot there.
Yes.
Just a concern.
Yeah, no, we would definitely take care of salting it, and, and doing what we need to do to, to avoid that.
Now, speaking with a lot of the officers, and I know probably Kevin would know this, that in the past, I believe when the school was first done it, this was the pattern. And then it was changed during Chief Bamba or Chief Lutalai, when they changed the traffic patterns.
The exit was the entrance.
Yeah.
So, it literally came in right against the middle school. And then the, the entrance for the high school was the exit.
I do just want to say, just thank you for the time that you've spent putting this together, and, and also, just thank you for the fact that whenever we call you, if it's an inclement weather day, or whatever might be going on, and we call and ask for some assistance, you're there right away, and we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight, chief, and your representatives, we appreciate it. And anyone else have anything? Anyone from the audience? Yes, you know.
The way we're redirecting the traffic, there are arrows that go both ways, if they get to the thing. Do you think that might ease the confusion for the high schoolers, or anyone else who was following the new traffic pattern?
It could, but we, we will have all our police officers, a majority of our police officers up there, to try to educate them on which way it's, it's going to go. We've been working with the DPW, our DPW in town, to put up signs there. I know the, the entrance now on Johnson Place, which is going to be the exit, on Monday morning, they're going to put the "Do Not Enter" signs, and we're going to try to get more signage up there. It's going to be some growing pains in the very first couple of days, and that's why we will have a lot of our officers up there, either on, pretty much on foot, just to direct the way we want it to go.
Just wondering about those signs. All the signs that are now, all the signs that, the signs that are there now are going to, they're going to be all directed in the proper, they're going to be placed in the proper direction. One way is going to list for you to go behind the elementary school, middle school. And so, it's going to have "Do Not Enter" signs on the Johnson Place side, and one-way signs as well. And no-left turn signs will be back in effect, so you can't make a left, obviously, into there, because there's going to be a one lane now. So, between the signs that are there, those lines, those, those arrows have been there regardless, and they've both been so on the record, forever. So, I don't think anybody's paying much attention to them. That is a good question, and I'm glad they decided.
We've, we've taken into that to account, when the high schoolers, when they leave school, they're walking down the steps back there, they all walk in the middle of that area, instead of walking out the sidewalk. So, we will have our officers out there telling everybody which way to go.
Okay. Again, thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to leave?
You can leave.
You can stay. Or you can stay. You can stay. These are nice meetings.
Continue with the agenda then. Be considered resolution.
Okay. The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopted various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Board of Education in the whole, in whole, is as if, as if the same were individually acted upon under the Superintendent's Report, Item Number Two, Finance Items 1 through 23, Under Instruction Items 1 through 4, Policy and Legislation Items 1 through 8, Human Resources Items 1 through 13, and Safety and Risk Items 1 through 3.
Does anyone want any of the items pulled? If not, are you in motion for the consent?
Move the consent resolution.
Second.
I'll second. Tony first.
Motion by Mr. Zano, second by Mr. Nielsen. Roll call.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Bazak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosano?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbannick?
Yes.
Mr. Wylota?
Yes, motion so carried. Continuing the Athletic Committee, Mr. Andre?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, Ms. Cheryl Beck's not here tonight. She apologizes for not being here. Quite a bit of accomplishments I'm going to read out, and should be proud of our children, such as, the high school boys' basketball concluded regular season, qualified number nine seed for state tournament. The middle school boys' basketball finished with a 14-2 record. The high school girls' basketball was fifth seed in the Central Jersey Group II State Tournament. Finished season was 16-9 record. The middle school girls' basketball finished with a 9-8 record. The high school wrestling record was 1-16. Individually, senior heavyweight Kenny Cross placed third in the GMC tournament. The middle school wrestling finished the 11-2 record. Senior Oliver Carr qualified for the NJSIAA fencing championships to be held this Sunday, March 3rd. The Rams cheerleaders participated in a cheer competition on February 10th in Asbury Park and placed second. The girls' bowling was a 10-6 record, finished second in the Blue Division. And Senior Laney Fiegles finished second in the GMC tournament. Senior Calina Brimage, Calina Brimage, placed 25th in the NJSIAA State Tournament. The bowls, the boys' bowling record was 2-15 record. The robotics team, robotics has their first champ, has their first competition Saturday and Sunday, March 16th and 17th, at the Bridgewater Raronton High School. And Elsie, Elsie, Els Fiegel, Fiegles, Fiegles placed, first place in the GMC All Blue Division, as well as first in the, all of the GMC Conference. And Calina Brimage was third, Calina Brimage was third in the GMC All Blue Divisions, and 10th in all conference. And Athletes of the Month for February is Senior Derek Whitaker and Junior Ashley Fisher. That's all I have. Thank you.
If I could just add, Derek Whitaker, the Student Athlete of the Month, hit his 2,000-point career basket this past month on senior night. So, it was a nice accomplishment for him. And we have sports awards for middle school next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and high school at 6:30. That's it.
Anything else? Not then, Human Resources, Mr. Urbannick?
Okay, under the Buildings and Grounds Report, we have the report of the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. Steve, Mr. Blazja continues to do an outstanding job, keeping all of our buildings running. It seemed, from the report, that this past month was plumbing month. And once again, his staff stepped up to the challenge, and took care of all of the repairs that had to be made, and saved us from having to call in plumbers, because our staff is that talented. Other than that, we continue to keep the place in good shape. There any other comments or questions from any other members of the board? Otherwise, that concludes the Buildings and Grounds Report.
Mrs. Cruz?
There are four items from Monday. 20, approved addendum, ESS Support Services LLC, hourly rates and conditions, 2018-19 school year. 21, approved therapy resource associates of New Jersey, speech therapy service provider, 2018-19 school year. 22, approved contract Maxim Healthcare Services, Inc., nursing service provider, 2018-19 school year. And 23, approved contract Delta T Group, North Jersey, Inc., special education professional and evaluation service provider, 2018-19 school year. That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions? Ms. Zano?
Mr. President, the same four items as Monday, but Item Number Three has one additional component to it. We have one more student going to Hittigva, that was listed on Monday night, and that concludes my report.
Okay. And Mr. Porter, on negotiations?
Yes, we've exchanged proposals. We have resolved the scattergram, base scattergram issues with the SREA, and we will have our first meeting on March 14th.
Okay. And Mrs. Bush?
No changes since Monday night under policy.
Okay, and Human Resources, Mr. Nielsen?
There's five new items tonight, sir. Approved disability leave, family leave, Kimberly Meyer, elementary school ASI teacher, 2018-2019 school year. 10, approved disability leave, family leave, intermittent family leave, Randy Treoman, LDTC, 2018-2019 school year. 11, approved resignation for retirement, Elizabeth Garrus, middle school social studies teacher. 12, approved resignation, Martina Gerba, lunch aid. 13, approved appoint Daniel Valenzuela, after-school ESL staff, 2018-2019 school year. And that'll suffice.
Anyone? And Mr. Andre?
I have, I have nothing new, Mr. President.
Community relations, Mr. Bazak?
Yes, I have eight items on the agenda. Number one, the South River Elementary School would like to congratulate the 26 students in the third grade, 28 students in the fourth grade, and the 33 students in the fifth grade, who made the honor roll for the second mark period. The list of students is posted on the district's school website. Number two, the January Student of Month for sixth grade, congratulations to Colin Duiz for being selected as a sixth-grade student of month for January. Colin feels that he is a good role model for his fellow students, because he's a hard worker and always tries his best in his classes. He also helps out his classmates in whatever that he can do. Congratulations. The January Student of Month for the seventh grade is Troy O'Connor. Troy O'Connor is the seventh-grade student of month for January. His favorite subject is math. He likes being challenged by math equations. Troy also enjoys social studies, because he feels learning about history and people from the past is cool. Again, congratulations, Troy. Number four, the January Student of Month for the eighth grade, Joseph Lakatos is the eighth-grade student of the month for January. He's a great student, described by all his teachers. He attributes his good grades to studying for quizzes and tests, as well as always doing his homework. His favorite subjects are math and language arts, because he feels that he strives the best in those two subject areas. Congratulations, Joseph. Number five, the Middle School Honor Roll Second Quarter. Congratulations to the sixth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students who made principal's list, high honor roll, and honor roll for the second quarter. The second quarter honor rolls list is posted on the district's school, district middle school's website. Number six, the South River High School Students of the Month for January 2019. Emily DeBellas is the January Student of Month. Emily can be found volunteering her time around the South River community. She monitors special needs students at the extended school year program, works for the senior citizens at the National Church residences, and works with the children of both the South River and East Brunswick Public Libraries, where she, where she is a member of the Teen Advisory Board and a teen action group, respectively. Also, Silvio Cruz is the January Student of the Month. Silvio is very active in the community, where he serves on the Juvenile Conference Committee, is very active with the Relay for Life as a team captain, and more recently, as the liaison for the South River. Is the youth group president, altar server, and usher at the Corpus Christi church, and also helps out with the Friendly Sons of Shale. Congratulations to both Emily and Silvio. Number seven, the National Merit Scholar finalist. Congratulations to Sharif Husan, who has advanced to the finalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Program of 2019, a distinction that places him in a group of more than 15,000 students, representing less than 1% of U.S. high school graduating seniors. Merit Scholar designees are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies, without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. Over 1.6 million juniors nationwide participate, participate in this program, which is based upon PSAT scores. Congratulations to Sharif. Number eight, the South River High School Artist. Four South River High School students were chosen amongst the peers to represent our school at the Millsdale County Youth Art Month in March. Through this event, their artwork is published to artsonia.com where the work of senior Shanaya Fernandez was voted as, voted for as Arts Sonia Student of the Week for the week of February twenty-fourth. Shanaya's work along with the peers Kaylee Hernandez, Gemma McLaughlin, Kaylee Dosentos will be on display at the George Free Playoffs in Brunswick from February twenty-third to March two thousand nineteen. I also have, in addition, the high school drama production will be on Tuesday, March fifth at 7:00 PM at the Riomar. More information is also listed on the district website. And that's all I have for now.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Mrs. Cruz, Lee is on to the council?
Yes, we had our initial meeting with Councilman Nebiger just this past week, I believe, and it went very well. I think the most pressing issue that we have on our agenda to finalize, and I think we won't have any issues with that, is just re-establishing the contract for Class Three officers for the school year of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So everything seems to be in alignment, it's just a matter of getting the paperwork done. And that's all I have.
Anyone else have any comment? Not the PTA, Mrs. Bush, you have anything?
I do, actually. So yet last night was Founder's Day, which was the kindergarten concert. So we wanted to thank the PTAs for organizing that and for recognizing and congratulating all the lifetime membership award recipients from all the different levels. Also, Cheryl had asked that I reiterate when the next round of meetings are going to take place. So primary school is March twenty-seventh at 6:30. The elementary school is March fourteenth at 5:30. The middle school meeting is in May, it's May twenty-ninth at 6:30, and I double-checked that is the correct date. And the high school is April seventeenth at seven o'clock. And that's all.
And the library, Mr. Bazek?
Thank you. I know I say this every month, but the South River Library staff, they work very hard to put together programs for the entire community. You can find all their information on, about what activities are going on at ERAM or also the South River Library website. In addition to some regular weekly and monthly programs, this month, they have the Dr. Seuss Magic Show on Monday, March fourth, 6:00 PM. On Monday, March eleventh at 7:00 PM, they're hosting author Kevin Weiss for his presentation of The Bridges of Manhattan. And then also, the complete works of William Shakespeare in two acts by three performers will be presented by the Hudson Shakespeare Company on Thursday, March twenty-eighth at 7:00 PM. And that's all I have.
And next is the Educational Foundation, Mrs. Bush?
Yes, well, Shanetta was already here, she presented the mini-grants, and Sylvia already recognized the annual, fourth annual dinner dance. So really, all I have left to let everybody know about is the next meeting, which is always the third Thursday of the month. So that's March nineteenth at seven o'clock, and it's here in this room.
And Mr. Porter?
Nothing to report tonight.
And our student rep, Ms. Cassiana?
Yes, I do have something for you tonight. Thank you. Okay, so I would like to briefly talk about like the student activities that we had in February of the past month. So we had the Valentine's Day Dance, which was hosted by the class of two thousand twenty-two, so the freshmen, and I think it was a success, although I didn't personally go. I heard a lot of the students enjoyed it, and it was here in the school, so I think it was the first time in a while that they've had like a dance hosted in the school. So, yeah, the students seemed to enjoy that. And the second thing was the, for also Valentine's Day, the Take a Step Club, they put up hearts all around the school on like, on most of the lockers with pickup lines and like funny jokes on, and stuff on them, so, I don't know, so people could feel less alone on Valentine's Day if they're, if they were single, I guess. So, yeah, those were the two main activities in February, and I just thought you guys should know about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria, you've also seen your program of studies, right, for next year, the new courses?
Oh, yeah, I'm waiting in my backpack.
Okay.
Hey, is there any older, new business?
I just have a question for Mrs. Bush.
Sure.
What's on the nineteenth of March, again?
That is, it's the Foundation for Educational Excellence.
Okay, now, you said Thursday, March nineteenth. March nineteenth is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. It should be Tuesday.
Oh, it is Tuesday, March nineteenth.
I may have misspoke. It's always the third Tuesday of the month.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
And on the older, new business?
Just the high school is doing their Mr. South River Pageant on tomorrow, actually, tomorrow at 6:30. So if anybody is interested in watching a very entertaining show, feel free to come out.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Six thirty. And it's pretty funny.
And a motion for payment of bills?
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the school business administrator, board secretary be paid as listed in ICAM.
Motion, my mistress.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, so carry.